The Acts of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and in the city council chamber and remotely. We're on Zoom with the current meeting ID of eight seven one five five seven seven five one five four and the passcode of five four five oh one six. The meeting will be viewed also by the digital platforms at Facebook, Lawrence City Council page, YouTube, Lawrence City Council page. And obviously, our elevator still remains out of service, but as an update, I am hopeful that we get this by July first. Fingers are crossed. Can you hear me now? How about now?
Sounds very low.
All right. Let's just do some of the ministerial stuff as we get going this evening and we'll need to stop, we will. Our clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy. Counselor De La Cruz.
Present.
Counselor Levy is present. Counselor Peano.
Present.
Vice President Reyes. And Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Present.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Present.
Counselor Infante.
Present.
President LaPlante.
Present. Would you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? Counselors, good evening. At this point, I'm looking for approval of the April nineteenth minutes. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion made by Counselor Selena Reyes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Discussion. Hearing non-clerk, please call the roll. Actually, we're all here. Do we need to, um, we don't need to have a roll. We can, we're all here.
We're missing one.
Yeah, but she's not on, we don't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, we have, at this point, we have public participation. We have a long agenda. We have a lot of folks. We want to get you all in. By our rules, we limit it to thirty minutes, so we have other business to do as well. So if somebody has already repeated what you said, you may want to just give your name and address and just say quickly, I agree with whatever, and just kind of move on. That way. I'm sorry? Point of, uh, point of, uh, whatever the interest is. Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, uh, Counsel President. Um, this week is Public Service Recognition Week. Since nineteen eighty-five, every president and government leader across the country have recognized this week as a special time to acknowledge and say thank you to the employee that work for federal, state, and local government. In Lawrence, we have the best employees in the Commonwealth, the best in the country. Every day, they show up and give their best service to citizen in Lawrence. So to all, all our citizen employees, thank you for your service.
Nicely stated, Counselor. Thank you so much, and we appreciate your, and I think we all share your, your, your comments, so thank you. Um, at this point, back to public participation. You have two and a half minutes. The first two minutes, after the first two minutes, the bell will run to give you a reminder that you're closing up on the time. Um, and then, um, please don't, uh, address any particular counselors. Please address the chair. Clerk, will you please, uh, call attendance for the Vice President, please?
Vice President Estela Reyes.
Present.
Perfect. First speaker, Mr. Mali. Mr. Mali, name and address, please, for the record. Please, our rules say put the signs down. Please, our rules say put the signs down. There's no signs in the city council chambers. Please, thank you.
Homonymally fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. In this important year, we demand of you and Honorable Mayor Brian De Penya contract for Lawrence Police now. Lawrence Police Department with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Roy Vask has done excellent job to protect our citizen. We must declare September thirteenth each year the day of the police appreciation. Lawrence Police in this global pandemic with the highest degree of sacrifice and dedication. We are united to say contract for Lawrence Police now. We support Lawrence Police Union, Senior Officers Union. Million thanks to our DPW workers and the union for their leadership and hard work. Lawrence is a beautiful city. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris, one of the best superintendent in the history of Lawrence, in a way to become the best public school in our nation. We are united to support our wonderful teachers and their union. Lawrence, one city under God. We are best example of respect and support for Union right. Police Officers Union, Firefighters, DPW, and Teachers Union. Remember your campaign promise. Save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible if we have a contract for Lawrence Police. Lawrence always strong, Lawrence always unite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. The next speaker is Mr. Rich Russell.
Good evening, counselors. My name's Rich Russell. I reside thirty-four Cross Street. I had to rewrite this at a moment's notice after checking the Lawrence Police Department's daily incident logs at five thirty PM tonight. If I had gone with my initial rant, I would have looked a little dumber than normal. Someone at the LPD should become a mind reader. How did they know I was gonna beat on them for going fifty-four days without posting any incident logs on the city website? The point is that they took away our ability to hear what was happening on the police radio several and a half years ago. Now you go fifty-four days without us letting us see what's happening in the city incident-wise. What's next? Chastising people like me that are willing to point out these issues? We know that expecting the local print media to report on anything in Lawrence in a daily manner is a lost cause. The only way we know what's going, what's happening in Lawrence is through the daily incident logs. Please don't let these logs go, uh, unposted for any period of time. We, the citizens of Lawrence, deserve to know what's going on in the city. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Luna. Welcome. It's been a while.
It's been a while. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Anna Luna, and thank you again to the opportunity to speak. I'm the Executive Director of Act Lawrence. Our office is located at fifteen Union Street in Lawrence. And today, I'm here to speak in support of the two CDBG applications we have submitted. We understand the subject is up for discussion tonight, and we apply.
Ms. Luna, there will be a public hearing this evening on this without any time restraints. Would you be willing to, to advocate your time now? And at the public hearing, you can speak for as long as you'd like, which is coming up.
I'll be very quick, thirty seconds, and I will stay for that part. So we just want to say, please support our applications, and we will be supporting youth in Lawrence, forty or more, twenty-five home buyers or more in both our youth and jobs leadership program and also the home buyer program. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jose Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here. My, I reside in ten Jefferson Street, Lawrence, Mass. I'm here to support, um, our CDBG application. I housing counselor at ACT Lawrence. And, uh, I would like to, um, to get our budget approved as it is. Uh, the budget would allow to help the first time for higher education.
We have a special spot just on this, and I won't even cut you off. You'll have a chance to speak for as long as you want, and you can advocate for, for the CDBG.
I just want to mention that last year, our counseling sessions held more than thirty peoples to buy a house here in Lawrence, Mass. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So there's a couple of public hearings tonight. If you're wishing to speak on these two matters, one is the Merrimack Street, and the other is on the CDBG budget. I would ask that you not take this time. We have a very full agenda, but if you can come back and stick around, it's gonna be early part of the evening for the public hearing. Next is Brianna Anderson. Thank you so much. Maria Encarnacion. Okay, do you wish to speak on the, on, on the CDBG or on a different matter, ma'am? Different matter? Okay, come on up.
I need translator, please.
Is there anybody in the audience who would be a good soul and maybe help with this little bit of translation? We would appreciate it.
Yes.
There is a volunteer I see standing up. You don't like that volunteer, Counselor? Okay.
Yo tengo dieciséis años trabajando para la Loren High.
I have sixteen years working for the Loren High.
Y gano a catorce sesenta.
And my pay rate is, um, fourteen sixty dollars, fourteen dollars and sixty cents.
Y estamos luchando por ver si ni siquiera el mínimo no quieren aumentar.
And we are fighting, um, to get even the minimum salary. Quería decir algo más, ma'am. ¿Cuál es su nombre?
Maria Encarnación.
My name is Maria Encarnación. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Uh, first name, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce. Last name is Reyes at one oh three Hayville Street. I just can't read the writing. Good evening, ma'am. If you would, give your name and address, please, for the record.
Su nombre y su dirección para el récord, por favor.
Uh, Brigitte Reyes, one oh three Hayville Street. So my name is, oh wow. That doesn't need translation, though.
Tengo dos preguntas.
I have two questions tonight.
Donde, quién vamos a, per, um, perdón primero. Yo trabajo para la cafetería de la Tarva.
Okay, I work in the cafeteria in the.
Tarva School.
Tarva School.
For, um, veintidós años.
I have twenty-two years working there.
Y ahora mismo estamos presentando un problema bien serio porque no, no quieren aumentar.
And right now, we are having a very big issue because they don't want to raise up our salary.
Y mi primera pregunta es, donde, quién vamos a dirigirnos cuando tengamos un problema si la jefa, Cynthia Paris, no, no quiere dar la cara.
And my third question is, um, with who we are going to speak when we had a problem because our boss, ¿cuál fue el nombre?
Cynthia Paris.
Cynthia Paris, she doesn't want to show her face.
Y la segunda es, ¿por qué motivo tenemos que tener tres uniones en el sistema escolar?
And my second question is, why we do have to, we need.
Tres, tres uniones.
Three unions in the scholarship section. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The next speaker has got one name that I can't even pronounce or understand, but eleven Bradford Street is the address. Somebody from eleven Bradford Street? What is the translator's name?
Buenas noches.
Thank you for your help this evening. You're a good soul for helping out. We appreciate it. Go, go ahead, ma'am.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Carmen Fiallo, once Bravo Street.
My name is Carmen, yeah, my name is Carmen Fiallo, and I live in eleven Bradford, Bradford Street in Lawrence.
Igual que mis compañeras, vengo con la inquietud de que seamos favorecidas con un aumento salarial, ya que es muy poco para como están las cosas, como es que estamos ganando, y todas tenemos muchos años de labor.
Okay, let me, no. So the same way as my partners just speak right now, I came tonight fighting to get a rise up in my salary because we have a lot of years working for the schools, and we haven't seen any rise up. Quería decir algo más.
Es cuanto.
So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your time this evening. The next, you may want to stick around. The next person's last name is Gonzalez, and I can't read the first name, on Catherine Street.
Mi nombre es Francis Gonzalez.
Francis.
Francis.
So my name is Francis Gonzalez.
¿Y cuál es su dirección?
Cuarenta de la Catherine.
Hablé.
Forty Catherine.
Forty Catherine, that's my address.
¿Usted quiere decir?
Y queremos saber eso mismo que estamos luchando y estamos siendo piquete donde, frente, en el frente del, de la oficina de departamento escolar y que la superintendente ya hace más de un mes y no ha dado la cara. No sabemos qué es lo que está pasando.
So the same as my friends has spoken about tonight, um, we are here to looking for questions, to answers. We are having, um, ¿qué era? ¿Cómo es it?
¿Cómo?
A strike, thank you. We are having a strike in the front of the office, um, because we have one month that we don't know anything about, um, superintendent. The superintendent, thank you.
Thank you.
Quería decir algo más.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the last, the next person's last name is, is, is Buten, Buten, how you pronounce it? B U T T E N. First one starts like a H A N O I, on Bruce Street. Okay, I think I got someone. Thank you, ma'am.
Muy buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Hanoi Buten.
My name is Hanoi Buten.
Laboro para la Loren High School.
I work in the Lawrence High School.
Tengo cinco años.
I have five, five years working over there.
Okay. Eh, mi pregunta viene dirigida al por qué los empleados de la cafetería han sido discriminados por tantos años.
Okay, let me, no. And my question is why the workers on the cafeteria, we are being discriminating for a long, um, for that long.
Partiendo desde el salario hasta los beneficios que tenemos.
And we are speaking about the salary and even the benefits that we have. Eso es todo lo que quería decir. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zunilda Villa, Ferry Street? Eugenia? No, I'm sorry. Uh, Zunilda Villa? On Ferry Street. Is she here? Going once. Counselor Ray. We're gonna move on. Uh, Eugenio Uraina? Eugenio Uraina? No, no.
Buenas noches. Good evening.
Mi nombre es Eugenio Uraina.
My name is Eugenia Uraina.
Y mi pregunta es.
And my question is.
La mayoría de, de toda, la misma, de toda nosotras.
It's the same question that everyone has tonight.
Por qué un salario tan mínimo.
Why we are, um, why we have a minimum salary, so minimum salary.
Y no hay beneficio para nosotros.
And there is no benefits for all.
Ajá, no tenemos derecho a vacaciones.
We don't have, um, rights for vacations.
Mm-hmm. ¿Qué más quería decir? That's it.
That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, uh, next, next is Arelys Reyes or Anelis Reyes? Yes.
Buenas noches.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Arelys Pujol.
My name is Arelys Pujol.
Tengo dieciocho años en el sistema escolar.
I have eighteen years in the scholar, um, system.
Cafeteria worker.
I am a cafeteria worker.
For school. Eh, hasta ahora no me explico por qué nosotros no tenemos como esta preferencia de tener un sueldo justo, un salario.
Okay.
O sea, eh, beneficios.
Okay, un segundo para progresar. Till right now, I don't, I don't understand why we don't have benefits. We don't have a right salary.
¿Usted gana? ¿Usted le gana? Hasta ahora, yo, yo todavía no llego ni a la, ni a la quin, quince pesos a la hora.
Um, right now, I don't even get paid, um, fifteen dollars per hour.
Y por eso que no estamos haciendo uno, uno piquete para ver si no, oye, la superintendente o la, la autoridad recomendada para esto, para ver si no pueden ayudar, qué podemos hacer y mejorar la calidad de vida que tenemos.
So that's the reason that we are doing strikes right now. We are trying to call the attention of the authorities to get answer to this situation.
Okay, eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
That's it for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Anna Sanchez.
Your name and address, please, for the record.
Su nombre y su dirección para el récord, por favor.
Ah, mi nombre es Anna Sanchez.
My name is Anna Sanchez. I sent this to the microphone.
Thirty-one Vigolo Street.
And my address is, um, thirty-one, ¿cuál es la calle?
Vigolo.
Vigolo Street.
Uh, yo trabajo en la Parton por cuatro años.
I have four years working for Parton School.
Uh, y nosotros ahora mismo estamos levantando una protesta para la superintendente.
And right now, we are rising a strike for the superintendent.
Por los salarios bajos que tenemos, yo gano a trece noventa y uno la hora.
I, I, I get paid thirteen ninety-one dollars per hour.
Y estoy bajo el sueldo mínimo.
And I am right now working under the minimum salary.
Uh, la escuela, o sea, tengo algo como que exponer.
I have to explain tonight.
La escuela pública de Loren ha sido abusada por mucho tiempo.
The Lawrence Public School have been under abuse for a long time ago.
Uh, un abuso salarial.
Under a salary abuse.
Entonces nosotros queremos que la superintendente nos explique por qué siempre hemos tenido ese sueldo tan bajo con personas que tienen veinte y diecinueve años.
So what we are looking for tonight is, um, explanation of why we are gaining a minimum salary even though we have so many years working for the school.
Uh, la razón que nos da la unión.
The reason that the union is giving us.
Es que ellos tienen una protección, una ley que los protege.
Is that they have a law that protects, protects them.
Que se llama el receiving ship.
And the law of that, or, the name of that law is the receiving ship.
Y nosotros queremos que nos expliquen qué significa eso.
And we would like to get some explanation of what that means.
Esas son las razones que ella da entonces.
That's the reason that she's giving us right now.
Nosotros que, no entendemos.
But we don't understand.
Porque ella no, no, no se junta con nosotros, no hace meeting con la unión.
Why she doesn't have any meeting with the union?
Ella, la última reunión que tuvimos con el, con la unión de nosotros.
The last meeting that we had with our union.
La respuesta que nos dieron era.
The answer that they give to us.
Que el estado no tenía fondos para aumentarlos a nosotros.
Is that the state doesn't have any funds to raise up our salary.
Thank, thank you.
That's everything for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Romery Martinez. Romery Martinez.
Who's next, Counselor?
Fiona Lisa Martinez.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Fiona Lisa Martinez.
My name is Fiona Lisa Martinez.
Trabajo en Loren Highs.
I work for the Loren High School.
Y mi pregunta es.
And my question tonight is.
Si somos todos residentes de Loren.
If we are all residents of the city of Lawrence.
Y trabajadores de la escuela.
And we are all workers for the school.
A quién nos vamos a dirigir para que nos ayuden.
To who we have to speak to get help.
Si hemos tratado por muchos medios de hablar con la superintendente y ella no, no escucha.
Because we have been trying, um, um, through a lot of media, um, to get communication with the superintendent, but she's not answering us.
Estamos buscando lo medio pacífico.
We are trying peacefully.
Tratando de haciendo la cosa por la, de la mejor manera, pero nadie no escucha.
We are trying to do the things, um, the right things, but we are not receiving any answer.
Esta noche estamos aquí para dejárselo saber a ustedes lo que está pasando con los trabajadores de la cafetería de la escuela.
That's why we are here tonight, because we want to let you know what is going on in the cafeteria in the school.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel Vice President.
So next one, Santa Sanchez. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Santa Sanchez, y tengo la misma pregunta que tienen todas mis compañeras. Tenemos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Santa Sanchez, and I have the same question that all my partners had tonight.
Tenemos un sueldo muy bajo.
We have a very, very low salary.
Yo soy una de la más nueva, y mi sueldo mínimo es de trece cincuenta y dos.
I, I am one of the newest ones, and my salary is thirteen sixty-two, thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents per hour.
O sea, la situación está muy mala para uno tener ese sueldo ahora mismo.
So the situation is too bad for us to have this salary right now.
Y queremos que alguien nos escuche y nos ayude en esta situación.
So that's why we are trying to catch the attention of someone and get the help that we need for this situation.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Counsel Vice President.
Luisiany Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Luisiany Garcia. I reside at one hundred and sixty-one Jackson Street. Um, I'm here tonight in representation of all my coworkers from the LHS. Uh, I've been working for the Lawrence High School since September last year. I earn thirty dollars and fifty cents an hour, and we work very hard. All the women in there work their bodies off every day. We get home, we don't have energy to do anything. We lift a lot of weight. We cook a lot of food for the kids, and we are the ones that are giving them the, what they need. Because if you don't have food, you don't have energy to, to, to go to class. So I would like someone to pay attention to that. I know that the state has a lot of money, and they receive a lot of funds, and they don't want to answer us. We are very hard workers, and I would like you to please pay attention to that and notice us because we do a lot of work and we deserve recognition. Thank you.
Okay, last speaker is Jenny Baez.
Buenas, mi nombre es Jenny Baez. Good evening. My name is Jenny Baez. Vivo en cuatro siete ocho de Riverside. Um, and I live in the four seventy-eight Riverside Street. Yo también soy trabajadora de la cafetería de la Loren High. I am also a worker on the cafeteria, uh, on the school. Y tengo dos años y medio y gano trece cincuenta. I have two years and a half working there, and I, I get paid.
I have two years and a half working there and I, I get paid thirteen dollars and fifty cents per hour.
Y siempre, en esos días que hemos protestado, bueno, ya tenemos bastante tiempo protestando, siempre nos dicen, preguntándole por qué nuestros sueldos no nos pueden aumentar y siempre la, no han dicho que la superintendente dice que los trabajadores de la escuela pública, los trabajadores públicos no tienen derecho a aumento.
Un segundito, por favor. Sí, para traducirlo. And, um, we already have so many days, um, rising of strike, looking for, looking for answers of this situation. And what they say to us is that we don't have the right to get a rise up salary.
Según los trabajadores públicos, no tienen derecho.
The public workers, they don't have the right to get a rise up on their salaries.
Entonces trabaja, me encuentro que eso es muy discriminatorio y trabajamos muy duro.
And I found out that this is discriminating because we work very hard.
Cuantas madres solteras, eh, habemos ahí y no podemos en verdad pagar una renta con lo que ganamos ahí.
We are, um, a lot of single mothers working over there and we can't even pay our rents with the salary that they are giving us right now.
Y que no entiendo ese, por qué si, si la, eh, el costo de la vida sube, los trabajadores de la escuela pública no tenemos derecho a aumento.
And what I don't understand is why if the cost of life is rising up, why the public workers don't have the right to get a rise up in the salary also.
Gracias.
Thank you for that tension.
That's the last speaker.
Thank you very much, and that, that wraps up the public participation portion of the city council's meeting this evening. Thank you for, everyone for their comments. I have your comments. I am now going to give those names and addresses for the clerk. And before I recognize anybody, I do want to recognize one person first out of order because of somebody who's done tremendous work, but if you have something else you want to...
Uh, I mean, I don't know if it's the same thing, but I, I just want to make sure that we recognize, I don't know the young lady's name, uh, the translator. All right, if you, uh, go ahead, council president. I just wanted to make sure that that occurred.
I feel the spirit and I want to acknowledge that, uh, and, um, Miss Aquino, I, we, we, I think, I, I'm looking, a lot of people shaking their heads. Thank you so much for, for stepping up. You're the brave soul that decided to do that and we do appreciate it. It's not easy. I will, at this point, look to, um, uh, I'm looking to, because you were, we, we start a little late in the ordinance committee. I realize you've got some issues with the family and healthcare. And as a little thank you, everybody wants to get out of here early, I know. But councillor De La Cruz, would you be so willing as to give the committee report on ADA twenty-two? Is there a motion to take document ADA twenty-two out of order? Motion made by councillor Peano, seconded by councillor Infante. All in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Councillor?
Yes.
Adam Bisher.
We want to recognize, um, call the number ADA twenty-two, which is, uh, cielo y tierra en intimidad con Dios, Spray Park at the Point on June twenty-five, twenty-two, where Jessica Aquino will do her presentation.
Thank you so much. Um, right now I have a copy of the, um, permits approval. I don't know if you want to see it? Yes? Okay. Let me see if I have enough for everyone. Okay. Thank you so much. My name is Jessica Aquino. And I am here tonight to make sure that we have the approvals that we need for this event. This is a community event. I have been doing this event for four years already. It's gonna be on, as you already mentioned, June twenty-five in Newberry Street and East, and East Haven Street, in the Spray Park at Point. And as I mentioned, it's gonna be an event for the whole community. It's a concert, it's a Christian concert. We're gonna have different shows, United bringing us, um, live music and also praise for the community. And I would like to extend the invitation also for you, our leaders. We have been praying a lot for every one of you and we would like to see your faces that night, is that possible? So we can pray in person for you also.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, motion to...
Motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm going to look now to councillor, thank you, congratulations. You're good to go. Uh, we do have a guest here this evening and, um, I'm looking to councillor Rodriguez for, uh, to do the proper parliamentary stuff so we can move on to recognizing our guest. Councillor Rodriguez.
Thank you, mister, mister president. This is a set of three vote that I would like to take the opportunity tonight. Uh, the first one need to, is to, uh, take item, uh, one thirty-six twenty-two, resolution and recognition of, um, Angel Peña. And, and I would like to, uh, first, take, uh, this item as an emergency for major, uh, community needs. That's the reason.
There's a motion to take it off. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Uh, because it's an emergency, we do need, I believe, a roll call vote. So if there's no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Levy.
Yes.
Councillor De La Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Peano.
Yes.
Vice President Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councillor De Rosario.
Yes.
Councillor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Infante.
Yes.
President LePlante.
Yes. Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes, I would like to take the second vote, uh, and this is to suspend, uh, rule twelve A and adapt, and actually, um, not, I mean, for the purpose of not to send it to committee, uh, at this point.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend, uh, rule number twelve. It has been properly seconded. Uh, discussion? Hearing on again, we're suspending the rules. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Infante.
Yes.
Councillor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor De Rosario.
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice President Estela Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Peano.
Yes.
Councillor De La Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor Levy.
Yes.
President LePlante.
Yes, the motion to suspend the rule carries. Mister Rodriguez?
Yes, the third vote is, will be to approve or accept this resolution and recognition of Angel Peña.
Has been made and properly seconded. Councillor Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would like to, um, step onto the podium and call Angel Garcia. Angel Peña.
It is in order.
Good evening, councillors, and thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to, for, for me to be able to do this. For me, this is very special. And, uh, this is, uh, the recognition of Angel Peña, not only for everything that he have done, but more importantly, for what he have, uh, done for others at my district and throughout the city. Uh, Angel was born in the Dominican Republic on May third, nineteen thirty-seven. Today is his birthday. And, uh, he is eighty-five years old today. Uh, and actually, he was... Uh, he came to the city of Lawrence back in the eighties. Uh, Lawrence was a little different back then. Uh, but he still have that spirit of helping others. Uh, he is a selfless individual. He helped a lot of, uh, people from the excess towers at this point. Everybody knows him. He having missed an election. He's a super voter because he truly believe, uh, on democracy. And he have defended. He was a military, he was a firefighter volunteer. And he also cares a lot about, uh, the really, the real meaning of being a Laurentian and also a Dominican, uh, member of the military. Thank you, Angel, and I will say a few words in Spanish. Angel, muchas gracias, uh, muchas gracias por todo el servicio que usted le ha brindado a esta comunidad. Todos esos buenos deseos que usted le ha puesto, sonrisas, uh, oraciones, eh, y a la vez ese espíritu de buena fe que usted ha llevado para muchos residentes de la ciudad de Loren. Sobre todo, todos esos miembros, uh, que viven en los excess towers. Gracias grandemente por creer en lo que es la democracia de este país. Gracias por ser un, un ciudadano que se ha mantenido firme votando, pero sobre todo, eh, creyendo en los, en lo que son los cambios hacia los nuevos tiempos. Uh, durante sus tiempos como militar, usted fue una persona que verdaderamente dio fruto a nuestro país, pero sobre todo también dio fruto a este país teniendo los hijos que hoy usted tiene. Gracias por, uh, brindarnos esa oportunidad de tenerlo aquí y sobre todo, eh, happy birthday. Felicidades. And by the way, we need to take the vote, right? Gracias, Angel.
Muchas gracias. Estamos muy agradecidos por este homenaje que me están haciendo. Eh, les pido a Dios que me dé salud a todos ustedes por su buen comportamiento con todo lo que vienen aquí a esperar el mensaje y la correspondencia que ustedes le den su ayuda a lo que ven a allí. Estamos muy agradecidos de todos ustedes.
I would like to thank you all of you guys, uh, and I would like to wish you, uh, a good hope. Um, and, um, and thank you for everything that you've done to help others. Gracias, Angel.
Thank you, sir.
Muchas gracias.
And we salute you. Thank you so much. Uh, there is a, there is a proper motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. I do hear an amendment for councillor Rodriguez's in happy birthday. That is noted. All right, maybe that's not noted. Um, roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much, mister, uh, mister Rodriguez. That was, that was outstanding. Thank you. We're going back to the top of the list. Is there, is there a motion?
Motion to recess. Aye.
Have it. I'm now looking for a motion to come out of recess. Is there a motion, motion made? The councillor, vice president, I'm looking at councillor... Councillor Peano, that I'm not looking at, is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
The ayes have it. Motion to take item ninety-one twenty-two out of order, please. Uh, second. Mo, a motion has been made to take document number ninety-one twenty-two out of order. It's been seconded by council vice president Reyes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I believe there's a committee report for document ninety-one twenty-two.
Item ninety-one twenty-two, La Fiesta del Barrio. It's a block party at Splash Park that is gonna be on June four twenty-two, from ten to six. It's come out with a favorable recommendation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been properly seconded. Are all the, did we double check to make sure all the proper sign-offs were on there? Uh, that was made by the chair and it was seconded by...
Made by, this is the third time.
Yes. I believe it's councillor Peano. Just go with him. Uh, motion has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am.
So what is the other item? You say three item?
Okay, let, let's, let's, let's go to the top.
I get a motion to set, to take document eighty-six twenty-two out of order?
Uh, motion, motion been made by council vice president, seconded by councillor Peano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it to take out of order.
More, uh, document eighty-six twenty-two is a family tracking field sport day on May twenty-first from eight A.M. to six P.M. to Lauren Burn. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation and I made that as a formal motion. They have all the, the applicants, um, all the papers in order and has been approved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. I'm looking at councillor Infante with some recent information and looking for an amendment that's been agreed to by all. Councillor Infante.
Thank you, council president. Um, so, uh, the, the city made, made a bit of a stake and, and we reached out to this organization, um, to talk about dates. Um, we came to a, a, uh, a, a solution. And so with that being said, I would like to make an amendment, um, to change the date from May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two to Sunday, May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, and I second amendment.
Amendment has been accepted. Any further discussion on this matter? We really want to thank the organizers for their assistance on this. Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Sunday is approved. Is there another one that somebody had or are we ready to go for the beginning? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to take out item 122-22. I'd like to make a motion to take out of order item 122-22 Olive and July Anniversary Celebration.
There's a motion to take document number 122-22 out of order. It's been properly seconded by Counselor Levy and I'm purposely slowing down to give the clerk an opportunity to pull the files out of order.
Yes.
So not because I just had some sort of slowdown, it's purposeful. Motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. What is the motion now?
Document 122-22 has been sent out with Olive and July Anniversary Celebration and Common and Common on July 7, 22 from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation and I made that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion's been properly made and seconded by Counselor Peano.
Discuss him.
I'm now looking for discussion by Counselor Levy.
Yes, it's July 9.
July 9.
Yes.
Are all the sign-offs in? Can we attest to that?
July 9.
All the sign-offs are in? All the sign-offs, okay?
Yes, everything is in order.
Thank you so much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion, the permits agreed to.
Counsel President, I'd like to take out of order item 132-22.
The next motion is to take document number 132.
131, my apologies.
131. It's second.
Next one is to take document number 131, 22 out of order by Counselor Peano. It's been properly seconded by the Council Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Counselor Vice President, you have the floor.
131-22, The Dream Network Basketball on Connel Park on June 25th. It has been sent out with the favorable recommendation and I made that as a formal motion.
Second. The motion's been made by the Vice President, seconded by Counselor Peano. All in favor say aye. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, sorry. Are we moving?
Counsel President.
Are we moving on? We're going on. You guys are good. Congratulations. Thank you. You got your permits. Let's move on to the top. Number 390, Clerk, we're going to start at the very top now with the public hearings. The first public hearing is 3922. This is, Clerk, would you please read the public hearing notice?
Notice hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. at a public meeting of the Lawrence City Council in the City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid allowing participation both in person in the City Council Chamber and remotely via Zoom. Please note that the elevator at City Hall will not be in service. To receive access codes for remote participation, contact the city clerk at D La Blank at cityoflawrence.com at 978-620-3232 or 978-771-6693 prior to the meeting. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the following proposed ordinance. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lawrence that the revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence are hereby further amended by adding the following new paragraph to Section 10.40.060 of the Municipal Code Permit Parking Streets Designated to be inserted in the proper alphabetical order. Merrimack Street, North Side, from a point 1,028 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street to a point 1,157 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street. Two-hour parking except resident permit. Merrimack Street, South Side, from a point 131 feet easterly of the intersection of Ausgood Street to a point 171 feet easterly to the intersection of Ausgood Street. Two-hour parking except resident permit. Merrimack Street, South Side, from a point 218 feet easterly of the intersection of Ausgood Street to a point 278 feet easterly of the intersection of Ausgood Street. Two-hour parking except resident permit. Further, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lawrence that the revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence are hereby further amended by deleting the following new paragraph to Section 10.40.060 of the Municipal Code Permit Parking Streets Designated. Merrimack Street, North Side, from a point 1,035 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street to a point 1,115 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street. Daily from 3:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. Merrimack Street, South Side, from the intersection with Dolan Court to a point 125 feet westerly of the intersection of Dolan Court. To the extent that there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed and that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you, Clerk. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none. Clerk, all in favor say aye. I'm sorry. I'm looking, my bad. I rushed that a little bit. Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what is the motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30-day.
Motion made and is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Infante. Discussion, Counsel Peano.
Thank you, Council President. So no, I just want to get a better understanding. So one, the picture that's with, that's attached to this is not of Merrimack Street, is that? Okay, all right. So that's the first one because I did not recognize, you know, the buildings. Boston? Okay, well then that's probably why. So I guess my question is, so one of the things that I've found in that street is that it is very difficult to find parking if you want to go to one of those businesses because it's being taken by most of the tenants that live on those complexes. Now, these tenants have a parking garage right there. And I'm just wondering, sort of the reasoning behind this, why we're keeping the except the resident sticker, especially during the weekends? So I just want to get a better understanding of the purpose for this.
Sure, so just to provide some facts and to answer the question. So there are people who live in the complex, but there are also people who live in the tenement housing across the street from the mills. And so those are the individuals who are most impacted because they don't have a parking garage to go to. They park on the street. So the idea behind this is to, in this day and age, it's becoming more and more and more challenging to try to find the happy medium of providing residence space while also providing space for businesses. This is, again, we've tried so many different things. I think this is maybe the third or fourth bite of the apple to try to figure out a way to really deal with it in this particular incarnation. The idea here is to let, the residents need a place to stay seven days a week. These businesses are there, they operate fairly frequently. And the idea here is a couple of hours parking regardless of the time they can park there. And usually you could maybe grab a bite to eat, you can get your whatever, the other businesses are there. And that's a decent amount of time. Meanwhile, you're taking away some of the restrictions because right now they have to move their cars like at 6:00 in the morning or something like that. And so there's some, there is some impediments, right? So this is another opportunity to follow the model that seems to be working in Boston. And we're going to give this, because I'm running out of ideas, so we're going to give this a shot and see if this works and we're going to give it another year. We've been doing this now, like I said, this has been like my third or fourth time trying to find a solution.
I thank you, Council President. I think the only thing that I'd like to articulate is as far as the business owners that are over there, that is a huge concern. And as someone that tries to support those businesses, I would say it is very difficult finding parking pretty much almost at any time. And I find when I'm looking at the people that are parking there, they do not seem to be, folks are attending the businesses and they seem to be folks that are heading into the sales complex. So I hear what you're saying and I hope it's the case that it's the folks from those tenement buildings. But it is a little discomforting when I'm seeing folks that are choosing to take up that space just to be, you know, 30 seconds closer to their home.
Thank you, Counselor. And as we go through this, I am willing to work with you and to monitor and to work with you and to see if this solution works. If it needs to be tweaked again, I'm willing to work and see if there's any tweaking that needs to be done. I do appreciate that and I look forward to any partnership that can be there. So is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you. The next document is document number 7622 for the public hearing. Clerk, will you please read the public hearing notice?
Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. At a public meeting of the Lawrence City Council in the City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid allowing participation both in person in the City Council Chamber and remotely via Zoom. Please note that the elevator at City Hall will not be in service. To receive access codes for remote participation, contact the city clerk at dlablank@cityoflawrence.com at 978-620-3232 prior to the meeting. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public hearing concerning the proposed annual action plan for fiscal year 2023 for the City of Lawrence, Mass. as follows. The Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in the amount of $1,710,748. Home Grant in the amount of $875,762. An Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, in the amount of $146,568. A copy of the proposed FY 2023 HUD Annual Action Plan and proposed budgets referenced herein may be examined, viewed, and copied at the Lawrence Community Development Department, 12 Methuen Street, Lawrence, Mass. And at the Office of the City Clerk, Room 107, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Any business day between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Documents are also available on the city website. All persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and please give your comments, your name and address.
No, there's no signing sheet now.
Name and address, please, for the record again.
Anna Luna at Lawrence, 15 Union Street in Lawrence. So just briefly, just to reiterate, we are here speaking in support of Act Lawrence's two CDBG applications. I wanted just to expand a little bit and I promise I'll be short. That the funding that we applied for for the Youth, Jobs, and Leadership Program, many of you know about our services. This year, we are trying to serve more Lawrence youth because there is more Lawrence needs. And we plan to support 40 or more students by gathering funding from many other sources. Some of the projects and services we have include financial literacy, soft skills, and also teaching the youth different things like budgeting, credit, and student loan information. I wanted just to inform the community that the applications for the youth program is available on ACT Lawrence Facebook page. And again, it's only available for Lawrence residents' youth. And finally, for the home buyer program that we are also proposing, we plan to support 25 Lawrence residents or more, depending on other grants that we're applying to. And last year, we're very proud to share with you that through all of the work we did, even during the pandemic, we were able to have more than 30 people buy a house and that is very remarkable. So I wanted to share that information with you and ask again for the City Council's support with our application. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter?
How we doing? My name is Jed Kaler. I'm the Executive Director at the Greater Lawrence Community Boating Program. First, I'd like to thank the City Council for the continued support that we've had over the year at the boathouse to continue to reach the children and families that we have had. I also want to thank and commend the Lawrence Recreation Department on being able to pull together a program last summer when honestly, we did not know if that was going to work. Martha Velez, Adely Gonzalez, and Anna Medina. I have to commend how they did that, how they pulled it together. And I'm really looking forward to see how the Rec Department and everything comes out this year. Our recreation programs before COVID helped 536 kids a day, from 8:00 in the morning till late at night. Last year, we went back up to 340 kids a day. And this year, we're looking to reach back to 500 children a day, Monday through Friday. So the continued funding is so important to our program. It doesn't just reach the kids that come with the Lawrence Recreation Department. It also affords the children of Lawrence, especially from the Lawrence Public Schools, free memberships to attend the boathouse, especially with funding in parallel with all the other grants that we bring in. I want you to remember that the boathouse is here for you guys. It's a community resource. If you know how, if the City Council or anybody in the city knows how we can help out, please reach out and let us know. Our next free event for the community is Summer Fest on June 18th. Free food, boat rides, magic show, bunch of organizations coming down to be there for the community. So come down and enjoy and like I said, thank you for the continued support and let me know how I can help the city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members in the audience who wish to speak? I do see there's a member with us virtually. First name, Amy, would you care to speak at this time? Just unmute yourself and give your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Amy Brown. I live at 75 Sterling Lane, Hable, Mass. I'm the Assistant Director of Education over at the Lawrence Boys and Girls Club. Again, we appreciate all your support at the club. Our programming rating currently with this CDBG provides programming for 241 kids at the club. It ranges 8th grade through 12th grade, college and career readiness. We have tradespeople coming in, we do college tours, tutoring, we have ed consultants come in, prep school tours, SSAT prep, anything that's helping these kids to open their eyes and help them move in the direction that is going to, they're going to be most successful and happy, so.
Thank you very much. Seeing there's no other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter, the public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what is your? Motion to approve?
Second.
Before I can even say, Counsel Peano with the approval, or seconded by Counsel Vice President Reyes. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Levy.
Yes.
Counsel Cruz.
Yes.
Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Vice President Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel De Rosario.
Yes.
Counsel Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Infante. President LaPlante.
Yes, the motion carries.
Counsel President, I'd like to take item 115-22 out of order.
Second.
Gotcha. There is a motion to take document number 115-22 out of order. It was made by Counsel Peano. It's been properly seconded by the Council Vice President Estela Reyes. All in favor, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselor, is there a motion?
Yes, Counsel, I'll do the report. So the Personnel Committee met last week and unanimously voted to approve the appointment of Francisco Abid as an Associate Member of the Lawrence Parenting Board. Unanimously voted to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation and present that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Sure, Mr. McCarthy, did you want to say something? Did you want to see the candidate, the nominee? The nominee is here.
Yes, Mr. Abad is here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Sure, absolutely.
Yes, to you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give him the opportunity to, for him to say a few words to the council as to why you want to serve and what inspired you and so forth, so on.
Sure, thank you very much for the time. So as some of you guys, I had the opportunity kind of speak to last week. Technically, pretty much just the opportunity to be able to kind of serve our community, have a kind of platform where I could have a voice to be able to help others out and be able to be given an opportunity to make that difference. As some of you guys know, and I mentioned that a couple of days ago, I've always been a Lawrence kid, grew up from boys' club days to Lawrence High to Salem State. I've always been involved with the community. I always had kind of that motivation to help others. I always had kind of that, that motivation to help others. I currently work at DCU. I'm on Broadway, spent a few years in TD Bank and Essex Street. So I'm from Lawrence High Basketball Team, just involved with Habitat for Humanity projects and kind of anything related to the community. I've always been involved, and pretty much, this is a great opportunity for me to kind of be out there and continue to help out and, and assist in whichever way I can. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question for them, McCarthy, if you, if I might mean to present.
Certainly.
Ben, I know that you, you work helping out the, the Lawrence Planning Board on the meetings and stuff like that. You advise them some issues. I just want to get your input for the public to know. We actually appointed somebody as an associate member, and I just want to establish the difference between a regular member and an associate member so people can know the difference and if they're willing to apply, they can apply.
Certainly. The, the board is typically made up of five members, voting members, and a sixth person who's the associate member. The board has been shorthanded, which is part of the reason I'm here tonight. I'm gonna be requesting when the vote is taken to waive the thirty-day requirement for appealing this. We do have a planning board meeting tomorrow night. We've been shorthanded now for several months, and a number of cases have been continuing month after month and being put on. So we'd like to have Mr. Abad, if he's approved tonight by this board, to be sworn in tomorrow and to work on the board. So the, the associate member can do all the same work, questions, and he votes as a regular member of the board. Whenever the board's shorthanded, whenever there's a conflict of interest between the board and another member, when the board's not available. So he's the alternate person. There was the, another, there was another position application that was tabled at the matter that would have given this the full six-member board, but that, that's gonna be tabled for the time being. But we will have five members, and he'll be a full voting. He'll be, he'll be voting and acting as a full member tomorrow night, if that's, if he's voted in.
But he won't be able to take a vote as an associate, right?
He will, what?
He won't be able to take a vote as an associate member, right?
Yes, he will.
He will, okay.
Associate member votes whenever we are shorthanded. But whenever, so if somebody, if there's a conflict of interest and somebody has to recuse themselves, he'll step in. If somebody's on vacation, he'll step in. And he can also ask questions, and he can comment and, and act in any manner.
Thank you so much, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Francisco, for taking the opportunity to serve the city of Lawrence.
So the motion's been properly made, and yes, Counselor De La Cruz.
Francisco, I'm very proud of you. As the kids from the community, we know you. We know that you're gonna do the best every place you go. Thank you.
I definitely won't let any of you guys down, I, I promise that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So Counselor President, I'll, I'll just say, I, some of the, some of the paperwork in the document, I'm sure it's here, but this young man has a amazing resume. So I, I, you know, if anyone's interested in kind of looking at his background, you know, one of the things that I was happy is to see someone with such an intensive resume that's been doing stuff for the community, wanting to get involved here. So I hope that as you're there, that this is, you know, a step, and that we've seen, see you getting involved in other ways. So I thank you again for, hope his years of service.
Thank you much, very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter? I will, I will make a note there that Mr. McCarthy is requesting that we suspend the thirty days to allow Mr. Abad to be able to vote tomorrow.
I, I will add that to my motion.
The motion's been properly made and is amended to waive the thirty days, and it's already properly seconded. Thank you all, because it's a personnel, I don't think we need a roll call vote, but just to be on the safe side, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote anyway. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Infante.
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice President Estela Reyes. Counselor Peano.
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Levy.
Yes.
President LaPlante.
Yes, congratulations. And you can make arrangements with the clerk as early as tomorrow for your swearing-in ceremony. Great. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. For the matters pending a public hearing, is there anything there that we need to move at all, or is this, that just gonna happen? You got it. Next documents are under resolutions. Document number one thirty-seven twenty-eight, a resolution honoring Captain James A. Mulligan. I put that on the agenda. That is going to the ordinance committee. Document number one thirty-eight twenty-two, a resolution honoring Louise M. Mulligan, which I put on the agenda. That is going to the ordinance committee. Document number one forty-four twenty-two, a resolution for the Lawrence High School, High School Cheerleading Team National Champions. I put that on the council agenda, and that is going before the ordinance committee. Going down to ordinances and committee reports, looking at document number forty twenty-one with the vice chair of the, of the ordinance committee. Please give the committee report for forty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's the matter forty twenty-one, and ordinance required in the naming of the city owner, public way, or any public property must be approved by resolution by the Lawrence City Council. It was submitted by President LaPlante. It was sent to the full committee with full recommendation to order a public hearing. This is a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second to a republic hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Counselor De La Cruz. Discussion, hearing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Counselors, I, I just wanna make sure, I'm gonna be calling one more thing out of order under new files, the very last document. Just because I'm, I'm just, we may not have a quorum. I just wanna make sure, not a quorum, but I wanna make sure we have enough votes. So I'm gonna look to take number one forty-eight twenty-two under new business. And this is a late file, so I'm gonna need a motion to put this on the agenda.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Rodriguez to put it on as a late file. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, just because it's, again, we're kind of suspending the rules for a late file, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Levy.
Yes.
Counselor De La Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Peano.
Yes.
Vice President is absent. Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Infante.
Yes.
President LaPlante.
Yes, the motion is now on the, on the agenda. This item, a relay for the Lawrence Catholic Academy School Walkathon at the Lawrence Veterans Memorial Stadium on five twenty-one twenty-two from ten A. M. to five P. M. is going before the ordinance committee, and that'll be meeting sometime next week, and we will let you know when that meeting takes place. Thank you. Back up to the top, and thank you, Counselor, we do appreciate that. Next document is number, I believe it's ninety-one twenty-two? Ninety, is it, did we do ninety-one already? Counsel, I'm looking for a committee report on number ninety-four twenty-two.
Iron ninety-four twenty-three twenty-two is the bridge, the Lord War, from April to December twenty-two, from eleven A. M. to eleven P. M. at the O'Connor Park. And that's a Sunday. Immigrant Place on Mondays, Reviviendo Park on Wednesday, and Escarito Park on Friday. This was submitted by Isaac Quiñón, and it was sent to the council with full recommendation.
Motion's been made. And seconded by Counselor Infante, I just wanna double check, are all the permits in order? Everything in order?
Yes.
The motion's been made and properly seconded, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, not roll call, me, voice roll. All in favor, say aye.
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 No, the ayes have it. Thank you. The document number one sixteen twenty-two.
Iron one sixteen twenty-two, Un Dia de Amor at the O'Connor Park. It's gonna be on September third, nineteen, sorry, twenty twenty-two, and it was submitted by Maribel Mardonado, and everything is in order. It was sent to the council with full recommendation, and this is the formal motion.
Second.
Second, the motion.
Motion's been made, it's been properly seconded. And is all the, the-
The paper is in order.
Everything is in order. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 No, the ayes have it. Document number one seventeen twenty-two.
This is already, oh, one second, I'm sorry. Iron one seventeen twenty-two is the Christian Community Fellowship Church Family Advent at the Garnet Park. This is going to be on six eighteen twenty-two, and was submitted by Anita Rodriguez. Everything is in order, and it was sent to the council with favorable recommendation. This is my, the motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Infante, and I just wanna, again, I wanna reiterate are all the, all the permits and everything signed off, are in order?
Yes.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is document number, I believe it's number one, one eighteen?
One eighteen. That's the next iron one eighteen twenty-two is John Dillon license from the Winfield Allow, Allow Inn, fifteen McForrest Street, Brandle Tetler, and it was sent to the council with favorable recommendation. And request the thirty-day.
So a motion has been made to include a waiving of the thirty days? Is that what the request, is that what you're making as part of the motion, Counselor?
Second, the motion.
I'm just double checking on what the original motion is.
I know that all of the paper was ignored, that nothing was missing at that time.
Okay, I don't-
And it was sent with favorable recommendation.
I don't believe there was any for, for any waiver to that, but a motion's been made to offer the permit. Paperwork is in order, it's been properly seconded by Counselor De La Cruz. Discussion? I don't think that's necessary to waive the thirty days.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 No, the ayes have it. You're good.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Document number one twenty-nine twenty-two.
Iron one thirty-one twenty-two, the ring, neck war, basketball, at the O'Connor Park. Oh, one twenty-nine, I'm sorry, one twenty-nine twenty-second, resolution to accept Lawrence lithographic gifts from former city council James J. Donahue, though submitted by President LaPlante. That was sent to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor, the Vice President has made the second. Discussion? I'd like to invite one of my, one of our former colleagues, who is the gentleman who's actually giving us the gift, who actually has the gift, and I want to invite Mr. Dowd, former city councillor, Jay Dowd, to please step up to the podium with the, with the presentation. And if he has someone with him, he's willing, or he's welcome to, to, to bring Mr. Meehan, who's a, this is the Austin Prep posse right here. Here we go. I went to Austin Prep.
Thank you, Counselor. My name is Jay Dowd. As Mark pointed out, I was a, a city councillor-
Excuse me, the council president pointed that out.
That's right. The council president. My, my term was back in eighty-six. And yeah, I'm up there with dark hair. But anyway, with me tonight is, is my classmate and fellow Laurentian, Dave Meehan, who is the chairman of the Lawrence Historical Commission, historical-
Vice Chair.
Okay, Vice Chair of Lawrence Historic Commission. The last time Dave and I were here before you was really just a couple of weeks ago over the issue of the canal. And you remember the, there were quite a few people who quite eloquently explained to, I think it was the committee on the hall, right? Committee on the hall that the, the idea that Central River Power disconnected itself from the canals and sort of run their own business and say, here, good luck to you, Lawrence, and, and these canals. The group spoke pretty eloquently on how bad an idea that was. And I believe you voted to support their concern that, that when Central River Power applied for its license, the city of Lawrence was not happy with the idea of disconnecting the canals from the falls. And so, so, so we appreciate that very much. But as time went on, I realized that up in my attic, I had something that, that the city council president would appreciate as a leader of that effort. And it's a lithograph that I was always really quite interested in. I wish I could tell you how I knew it existed. I can't. I just knew that if I ever found it again, that I should do something. And it was Dave who helped me to find this lithograph again. And we found it at the Athenaeum, where Dave is, the Boston Athenaeum. And it was in a collection of artifacts that were stored there. And we shuffled through them, we got permission to go in and take a look at it, and there it was. It was an piece of advertising that, that we're making as a gift to the council for your office decorating. And it is a picture from eighteen fifty-five of the stone mill. And the stone mill, as you know, has its own modern history. It is the site of-
Counselor Dowd, if you just wouldn't mind putting the microphone next to you, Counselor, thank you.
It is the site of Elizabeth Warren announcing her candidacy for President of the United States. Today, in front of the stone mill, is of course, the Everett. And the Everett Mill takes up what once was a common. So this is a picture from very, very early Lawrence, and that has significance. Essex Company advertising the city. And the thing, and it, by the way, that would be the intersection of Union and Canal Street. That bridge exists today in a more modern form, but it's there. And the reason I wanted to give it to the council and to the city council president is to point out the canal, right? The canal in eighteen fifty was worthy of advertising. The city was quite proud of that canal to the point where beautiful trees were planted along next to it, and you can see them in their early stages. And those were eventually the giant elm trees that lined the canal from Marston Street all the way to the, to the falls. And when the state rebuilt Canal Street, they put them all back. So the potential that we have to restore the canal to its original condition is really pretty good. We just need some interest in it. And it's hard to generate interest when nobody can remember what it used to look like. And because it doesn't look very nice right now, but this is what it used to look like. And so I figured that you'd appreciate this picture as a decoration for your office and a, an example of perhaps what could be. And how important do I think the restoration of historic structures is in this city? Well, I think it's really important. And I know you have a thousand things pressing, your thousand pressing needs on your agenda. Why would you worry about stuff like this? This stuff makes people feel really good about themselves. Once things, infrastructure like this, historic structures belonging to city history, once they're in good condition, their economic development matters. They become forces of business development. They make people feel good about themselves. And if government can help its citizens to feel good about themselves, well, that's a pretty good, that's a worthy project. So as a reminder, rather than sitting up in my attic, I thought, you should have it. So, and if, if it wasn't for Dave, I would have never found it. Again, I cannot remember where I saw this picture, but I saw it someplace, and, you know, I knew it would appear again, and it did. So this is- So this is for you, and it is a, a reminder of what could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I hope it can be a reminder that sometimes, you know, we, we must always reexamine the history that's right under our noses. And the original, this is a digital copy. The, the original lithograph, as Jay said, is in the collection of the Boston Athenaeum, which is one of the oldest private libraries in the country, founded in eighteen oh seven. So our history is being preserved down there, too. Along with a portion of George Washington's library is in their collection. Henry Knox's collection is in there, library is in their collection also. So it's a very important and esteemed place for our history to be. But now we have a duplicate of it here to remind us here in Lawrence. And I also wanted to congratulate the council. This goes back a while, pre-COVID, because I just got a really good look at it. Remember a few years ago, those paintings were in rough shape? And the DPW contacted me and asked if I could find out a restorer. So I put them in contact with the restorer from the Museum of Fine Arts. And not for that much money, they did, I think they did a wonderful job. You can't tell that, that, what mess it was before. When I saw them, I thought, oh, this is gone. But they did, he did a terrific job. So again, a preservation of our history, but it's always about education. So maybe when people see this in here, they'll, they'll make the connection and remind us how important our, our history is as an industrial complex. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. So there is a motion on the floor to accept the gift by former city counselor Jay Dowd. It's been properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, unanimous. I also wanted to do two really quick things. I want to take a moment to thank our acting DPW Director Jorge Jaime. As you can see around the room, remember all those things, all those pictures were down? I believe it was yesterday or today, Mr. Jaime was, was, was very influential in making sure that they were up. And now that they are up, if there's no objection, what I'm going to do for the next month, that will be hung in our office, but I do want the public to have an opportunity to take a look at it. So what I would like to do is, there is a spot right here in the front. And if Mr. Jaime, if maybe at the, the next convenient opportunity, we can place it there for a month to let other people who have, who will be visiting us have a chance to take a look at it before we put it into the council office. So thank you so very, very much for your generosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jaime, you had a job.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
I have something for you as well. This is the, the vote that we just took, and this is... It's up on your wall.
Oh, great. Does it say whereas? It does, oh, great.
Now, Counselor Dowd, was Counselor Plant then at that point as well? You know, he was like, what, like? Like, oh, okay. Okay. Was he?
And I'm still waiting. Take care.
Record. You still own a paper.
Thank you. With that, we are going to drift off into a very terrible place called Tabled Matters.
Mr. President, still we have...
So what we're going to do is, is that we are, we are going to hold off on one item to the very end. That's document number one thirty-nine twenty-two. I've already talked to Mr. McCarthy, he understands and appreciates it. And so it's a, it's going to be a little bit longer, so we're going to move that to the end, and he understands that. So, Tabled Matters. I've been asked by the administration if we, if somebody would take off the table the items number seventy-two twenty-two. Is there a motion? And that is the request to change ordinance two point six four point two seven zero.
Some move.
Capital Asset Project Manager submitted by the capital, Mark Guinello. Motion made by Council Vice President Estella Reyes, is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Reyes, is the Reyes or on this one? All in favor say aye. The ayes have it, it's now taken off the table. Now I'm looking for a motion.
Withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw document number seventy-two twenty-two. It's been seconded by Councilor Del Rosario. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is withdrawn. Great, thank you. Moving on. Moving on, moving on.
Counselor President, I'll, I'll just say, item seventy-one twenty-two is no longer on Tabled Matters. Just so we can clean that up.
The docu, so the, thank you very much, Counselor Piana, the, the, is informed, the chair, that seventy-one twenty-one? Seventy-one twenty?
Seventy-one twenty-two.
Seventy-one twenty-two, okay. Should not be tabled any further. We already, we already, we've already provided the resolution for that.
So the last document one thirty-nine, right? If it was tabled, it was...
Okay, but we want to, we, it should not be on there, so we're off, so we're not going to see it anymore. Okay. Done. Thank you. Seventy twenty-two, you want to take off the table? Okay, looking for it, hold on. Seventy twenty-two, Counselor? Seventy twenty-two, I see it. Motion to take document seventy twenty-two off the table matters. I'm delaying for a reason. Is there a second for this matter? This has been seconded, this is the matter, seventy twenty-two is dealing with poll worker compensation. That was put on by, I believe was put on by Counselor Levy.
Seventy twenty-two.
Motion to take seventy twenty-two off the table has been made and properly seconded. Motion made, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it at this point, because this item is now before us. I am recusing myself, I'm handing the gavel over to the Vice President.
So, item seventeen twenty-two, yes, I'm going to pass it to the city clerk.
Um, thank, thank you, Counselor Levy. This matter, it can't be moved tonight. This, this matter needs to, per the city attorney, remain tabled until the, the other matter that you have on the agenda this evening. Under new business, I believe you have ordinance language on item one thirty-two twenty-two. And that is an ordinance that you work to craft with the city attorney. So tonight, that would be sent to the ordinances committee. And with any luck, it will come out for a public hearing and get scheduled for the next city council meeting. And if that ordinance gets approved in that same meeting, you would then be able to move the item that you now have, have before. So that's the update. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to provide it.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Motion to table, item second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Dan, you save. I'm going to call it your item. Document one thirty-nine twenty-two. There's a communication from the mayor, city official, and city attorney. City of Lawrence participation in the MBTA. It has been put on the agenda by program Dan McCarthy, land use planner.
Hi, if I can get the IT person, I have it set up for a PowerPoint slide presentation on there. All right. Good evening, everybody. Daniel McCarthy, I appreciate the having the opportunity to do this presentation for the, as a communication from the mayor. Right up here, I'd like to see, we have a statement from Mayor Brian DePena, recognizing that the city, like all communities in the, in the state, is in dire need of quality housing. But unlike many communities, the city has already overdeveloped many of its most vulnerable neighborhoods, creating density and parking issues for its residents. The city is committed to working with the Commonwealth by participating in the MBTA communities project and by developing new housing and a man that will benefit its residents and will limit the impact on the city's vital resources. Our planning director, Daniel McCarthy, myself, will be presenting this message as the city's first step in participating in this project. So the first question is, why are these new regulations necessary? And here is a, a graph showing the, the amount of housing that's been developed over the comparison, the last thirty years and the thirty years before that. And as we can see, the, the amount of housing development has decreased over that time, leaving the state with a, what they consider a two hundred thousand housing unit shortage in the state. Massachusetts has the highest and fastest growing home prices and rents of any state in the nation. These have increased financial pressure on mainly lower and middle-class families, forcing them to sacrifice other priorities in order to pay for housing. These costs are primary driver of homelessness as well. This lack of housing production is an impact to the community development growth. And the high costs are a disadvantage as the city competes with other states and other communities in this area. This legislature we're talking about is section three A of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. The, you should have received a package on Friday that included the full legislature. It consisted of several pages of luminous, very detailed. But the, the, the very pertinent issues are all included in a small segment of it. So the first requirement is that the city has to create a district close to the transit station of a reasonable size. And they define reasonable size as fifty acres in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. The, the minimum density requirement in that is fifteen units per acre. It's, and the housing can't be more than half a mile from the commuter rail station. So what we're talking about is a McGovern transit station. So, so the five criteria that this city must meet is, is one, a multifamily zoning district in a minimum of fifty acres. The zoning district must have capacity for multifamily units equal to fifteen percent of the community's entire housing stock. That number, that has been determined by DHCD, is four thousand five hundred and one units of housing. One percent of the land area of the zoning district must be within the half mile of the commuter rail station. And it must allow building density of fifteen units per acre. Now, I just want to make one point as you look at this, because that, the first number that I think everybody's going to say is, we have to build forty-five hundred units of housing? That's not what they're asking us. They're asking us to create a permitting system that will allow by right housing for a number up to four thousand five hundred. That doesn't mean we have to go out and build four thousand five hundred units of housing. In fact, we probably can't, because the restrictions that are put on this by reasonable planning, which is mainly parking requirements for the housing. So we're the, we don't throw, we don't throw the zoning book out the window. We have density requirements, we have parking requirements, we have other issues that should be addressed. But we have to do, make it a permanent condition. A lot of communities are, are actually in, in great concern about this. But I, I want to point out that the city of Lawrence is actually in a much better position than other states. Other cities. So the, so the city of Lawrence in two thousand nineteen adopted the downtown smart growth overlay district. And that is a downtown, it's a zoning district for smart growth. It's a, it's called a transit orientated design. And it was approved by this council, which includes by right housing. So I, comparing right now our downtown smart growth district to the state's minimum requirements. The fifty-acre zoning district is a minimum. The city's district is two hundred and ten acres. Has to lob to four thousand five hundred and one units of by right housing. The paperwork I've submitted to the state says that we can build up to four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six unit housing in just the vacant buildings and the vacant houses, the vacant lots, based on those numbers. The building density of fifteen units per acre is a state requirement. The building density in the downtown would be fifty-four units per acre. At least a half of the district is within, a half a mile of the transit station. And in the, for the city, almost two-thirds of the district is within the half a mile of the transit station. This is the district, as you can see. It, it includes the entire island. Essex Street from Broadway to Marston Street and Prospect Street. And includes most of the downtown. It's where there, we, it's where we have the highest density of vacancies in the city, which is mainly the upper floors of the old buildings that are, that are, haven't been developed yet. Compare that with the zoning radius, you can see that the numbers that we, the most of the district is within that, and we meet the criteria. That being said, I've submitted the paperwork required by the state. It's being analyzed right now by DHCD. They will give us a report back to comment on that. So I just want to show what these numbers look like in other communities as a comparative. Some, much of this information was provided both by DHCD and MVPC working on this. So as you can see, Lawrence has required four thousand five hundred and six, and one units? I don't have my glass on. Every community, no matter how small, has to do a minimum of seven hundred and fifty units. So even Barksford and Rowley with two thousand housing units has to produce seven fifty. You can see the bigger communities that have rail stations have bigger, larger numbers, including Haverhill, which is similar to Lawrence. What happens if we don't comply with this? As I mentioned, I think we're already complying. I'm not too concerned about the compliance issue. But if we didn't comply, we'd be, we'd be losing a lot of funding, including mask works, infrastructure grants, and capital project funds, which the city uses a lot of. Most of our intersection and street development and bridge work is paid for out of these types of funds. So the, each, every community will have to be in compliance. As I mentioned earlier, I've already submitted the paperwork to the state. I, it was a three or four page. That was part of your documents you received on Friday was included in that. Also, the third document that was included was a frequently asked questions on some of the issues that come up. And I know a lot of residents are going to have questions about this. Timeline for implementation. March second was the compliance date, you know, excuse me, I tried to, May second was the compliance date. That was yesterday. I received an exemption from DHCD to present this on May third. And I'm going to be filing this report with them. I actually sent the agenda and a copy of this presentation to them last week. So they, they're aware that we're going forward tonight with this presentation. And these are just some questions that come up on, be frequently asked by the public. Why do we need housing? Want to change the character of our town? I anticipate there'll be a lot of debate amongst this board. I, I've already had discussions amongst several of members here about the cost of growth, how it affects us, the schools, the, our, our public services, our utilities. And, and, and growth affects everybody. I think the idea is to build, to, to plan housing in a sensible way. I can say anecdotally that a lot of the... I can say anecdotally that a lot of the density in the housing that we're seeing in this city is not occurring in the new developments. It's occurring in the old-growth housing. I just, as way of, one example of this is, we had a recent fire on Cosby Street. It affected five houses. 75 people were displaced. And speaking to the fire department, there were a number of people who were living in bedrooms and in basements and attics. And I think that's a primary problem for a lot of the density in the city. And there are issues that we need to address. The new housing, we will not be, we're not going to look at these neighborhoods to promote new housing, because what we need to do in those neighborhoods is fix the housing that's there. So, we're looking for ideas, and what the state wants us to do is develop around the train station, which I think there is room for development there. Again, the issue, oh, well. Well, that's, there, we're back again. I know, and I've heard this, won't new housing impact the schools? Well, of course, it's going to impact the schools. It's always a part of growth. But, as I said before, I've been researching the numbers on the new housing permits we've given in comparison. And I've, at some point, would like to do maybe a more detailed presentation to this board in the form of a committee, maybe, to go over and show you some of the numbers between the new development and where the housing really is by looking at school enrollment. Also, I think another thing that's important is, a lot of the new development are paying increased taxes, that these mill developments are some of the highest taxpayers in the city, which actually provides the city some relief and more money to go into developing our infrastructure, our schools, and our fire and police. So, that is basically it. I can, yes, yep.
Thank you. Feedback. I want to go to you first. Just to make sure the feedback is gone. Okay, good. So, this is just a presentation, but maybe some questions here, and we'll just, we'll go.
I submitted the paperwork to the state more than a month ago, and then they contacted me and said, "Oh, you know, you got to do a public hearing." And by the time they contacted me, it was, I couldn't get it on the last agenda, so, but I was fortunate enough to get it on this one, and they did give me a reasonable extension.
Counsel Del Rosario, and then Counsel Piano.
Thank you, Council President. It's funny how everything revolves in grants and funds. Like, if we don't do this, we're going to lose this. And I'm going to use this words, and I'm going to excuse. It's like Lawrence is a prostitute, so get him paid for what we're going to do. And you guys know it's going to impact the school system. You guys know it's going to impact the parking, and you still push it due to the fact that we're going to get grants or we're going to lose grants on it. Where all these kids are going to go to school? I don't see any projects of building school. We don't have no money to build schools. That's the question, I understand. And when you saw the graphic, Lawrence is the one that needs more housing than any other town? I honestly don't get it. And I don't want to stop on growing, but why don't we grow smart? Why we don't build a school? Why we don't build work? Why we don't build places to people to go to work? Why housing, though? More housing to bring more stress to our police, to our fire department, to our street, to our traffic, again, to our school system, that it's already overpopulated? That's what I'm saying. And at the end of the day, it's all revolving on what the state is going to give us. What's the state is going to give us? But at the cost of what? Why are we paying to get? That's what I don't get. That's what I don't understand. And you guys are still pushing.
Counsel Piano?
Thank you, Counsel President. I just question before I make a couple of statements. In this presentation, it's not that you're trying to do this MBTA, enabling partnerships for growth. Like, you're not trying to instate that, right?
No, wait. We have to participate as a community in the program. That includes me making this presentation and me submitting paperwork. So, if we hadn't approved the Downtown Smart Growth Overlay two years ago, we'd be in a position now that would be rushing to amend our zoning ordinance to come up with some kind of solution. But the fact is, we did approve it. It's in existence. It meets all the standards. I talked about this with DHCD. My understanding is, we probably won't have to do anything further to comply with this. And I think it's been working as we envisioned it. I think most of the development that's occurred within the Downtown Smart Growth has been market-rate housing. I think that's because of the market. But it's, I think what everybody pictured was that there'd be a deluge of affordable housing being built in the downtown area, and that is not what has occurred. It's been mainly market-rate housing, and it's young people, empty nesters, people who have jobs, and they bring, and I think they bring income and vitality to the downtown area. Again, I understand Mr. Del Rosario's comment. I don't know why the state didn't look at density as one of the issues, rather than sheer numbers. As I put it up there, we have to make more units of housing than Haverhill. Haverhill has five times as much land mass as us. So, there's some issues of fairness on it. But I think this is the state requirement. And as I said, we're fortunate enough that we don't have to take any outstanding steps that we're, I think, we're in compliance with it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. So, and thank you for bringing that up, because I think that, I just wanted to make sure that what was approved, especially under the 40R provision, that in itself was creating, from my understanding, was creating a sufficient amount of units. So, I'm worried to make sure that we weren't also trying to do something extra. So, that confusion is gone. Thank you for clearing that up. Can you go back a few slides to where you were showing the amount of units that are in Lawrence compared to the other cities? Thank you. So, I think, and I appreciate your presentation, because one of the biggest issues that's affecting Lawrence is the increase in rent. That rent, I mean, we had folks that were earlier today talking about wages. And the reason they were talking about wages is because the cost of rent has gone up so high in the past couple of years, and also the cost of buying a home, particularly in Lawrence, has gone up as well. And one of the reasons for that is the shortage that we're seeing across the state, and that a lot of our regional, our neighbors and our regional partners are not necessarily doing their part. I think it's insane that for a city of seven square miles, we're looking at 4,500 units. And you look at some of these other towns that are 20 square miles plus, and they're only doing 750. So, I know you have no power over that, but I just wanted to articulate sort of a frustration that, you know, one of the reasons that we have such a high population and there is such a high demand is because we've been doing our part for years in ensuring that there's proper housing in this city. And if others were doing their part as well, then the rent in Lawrence wouldn't be as high. I'd also like to state that I think that, you know, it was something that was talked about when we were approving, I forget, the overlay district, that what was being sold to us was that there was going to be a lot of affordable housing. And, you know, had a lot of constituents coming up, because they believed that it was going to be affordable housing. I remember speaking to people, being like, "That's, I doubt that." Just because, at the end of the day, developers are going to go where the money is, and the market is so high that it made more sense for them to go with market rate than take on these other requirements. So, there is a certain frustration that those that were proponents of this, you know, we weren't able to deliver on that demand that our community had. But that being said, thank you so much, Mr. McCarthy.
Counsel Vice President?
Thank you, Counsel President. I know this is, Mr. McCarthy, this is only a presentation. Sorry, I don't know what happened with my mind. But it's something like, I want to do an echo with, my colleague was just saying, you know, we are pushing for more housing. And I agree, the shortage that we have in the nationwide, this is not only Massachusetts. But what would it be, and if that is going to be adding to? Because I know when it's a grant, we don't want to let it go. We just want to keep it, and we want to use it, we want to do whatever we have to do. But what is going to be the flexibility for those residents that are still living, as you has mentioned it, in the basements and also in illegal attic? So, our people has been forced to live in the house, I mean, in a room, and also in a basement. We had a report more than, I don't even know how many houses, that they have illegal apartment, attic, and basement. And it's because those affordable housing that we had been part of or approving, we never, it doesn't exist. So, how do we think we can work just to improve at least that piece that our resident doesn't have to be suffering? I know that you have now mentioned about school, and I get that part, which is important. But how do we can continue doing that? Because this is what you hear from us.
And I think there's no easy solution, but I think one of the principles that we have to use is a question of balance, that we have to balance the idea of affordable, quality housing for the residents, the working-class residents of this city, with the need to make market-rate housing and develop it. And I go to meetings with a number of gateway community leaders, and we talk about this, because we're all in the same situation. And I remember talking to someone from Lowell, who said that once a number of these market-rate developments had come into the neighborhoods, that there was, the businesses on the main streets of Lowell started changing and increasing and improving, that there were clothing stores, and that there were more restaurants, and that there were bookstores, and things that were serving the people of the nature. Because the idea is to have the young people who graduate from Lawrence High School and get decent jobs to stay in the city and not move out of the city and take their earnings with them. I think that's part of the idea, is that it's, we are a city of immigrants, as we all say, but it doesn't mean we have to be constantly in a state of turnover, that we can be an established community and our families can, as I said, buy affordable, quality housing. There's a difference between just being affordable and having affordable, quality housing. So, I think that's the balance that we have to, as a planning department, as a city, we have to look at to make sure that all the developers get an equal opportunity and that we develop in a uniform manner that helps everybody.
All the grant that has been presented to us to be approved, so why we don't be part of the process of developments and not to wait until the last minute that when we are, or you are renting those places? We don't even know whose are getting, and if it's actually residents from Lawrence who are getting, because it could be someone who just start, or planning to move into Lawrence, but our resident is still with the same issue, so we're not getting anywhere, so we just get stuck. We are getting more houses, affordable housing, but we still have the people living in the same conditions.
Yeah. I mean, the state has offered us other programs. I think, I know one of them, in the last administration, they were doing was the accessory unit, which would be create more housing, let people build out their attics, let them build out their basements for more housing space. But the number-one thing I hear from the neighborhoods is parking. So, if you live in certain parts of Lawrence, putting more people in attics and basements will increase the parking situation, which is awful in some neighborhoods. And again, it's a question of balancing what certain neighborhoods can handle as far as development goes. And like I said, I think we overburden some of the poorest neighborhoods. I think some of the most vulnerable neighborhoods get overburdened. And as I pointed out about Crosby Street, that fire displaced 75 people. I never would have imagined there's 75 people living in those buildings, but there was.
Thank you. Counsel Dela Cruz, and then Counsel Infante.
Mr. McCarthy, what is the guarantee that a single mom with two kids won't have to do two jobs because she's going to get affordable housing? That's one of my questions.
Yep. Again, I think it's difficult. I think this last economic change has made it extremely difficult for people who are existing on the margin, who are earning just enough, and once, and getting a double dose of extremely high rents, combined with the cost of fuel, the increase in food, it's a difficult situation for anybody. I think the question is, what the city can do is to try and assist in the most opportune ways and kind of move with those changes. Again, this MBTA program centers around public transportation. The idea is to get rid of automobiles and lower the greenhouse, the carbon footprint of the city. That's the purpose of that in some ways, but it doesn't address the problems that we have dealing with people who, as I mentioned, have the same paycheck, but expenses that are much greater than they used to be.
I think until the state does a word to the mean salary, it's not going to benefit our community at all, because a lot of families, they're not making $30,000. And the mean salary, to be part of one of the apartment in this city, the new apartment that they're making, people have to go through a lottery, number one. They have to have an income, and they do take people that are not from the city. Then, we confront those three problems and the qualification of the person to be able to get one of those apartments. Then, besides that, we need at least three more schools. Then, I don't know why the state is putting us in this situation when we have all of these problems that we need to confront and to face and to discuss. Before any construction, we need to discuss, where are we going to send those kids to schools? Around Tower Hill, they need more schools. Around Middon, they need more school, because we're having a new building that is being reconstructed. Then, I don't see solution to this problem unless the state takes a big conversation with the residents at this moment, even way before thinking about building anything else. We need two more schools, at least elementary schools. We need more school in the Arlington District. We need so many things, way before to think about building more housing for the people. And how do that going to benefit any of these people with the median salary not being affordable for them? Because the median salary that the state is requesting is more than $30,000. And what are we going to do?
I understand that. Counsel Infante?
Thank you, Counsel President. Mr. McCarthy, because this is a state program, who would be the owners of these multifamily housing units?
Who would?
Huh?
What was the question?
Who would be the owners? Would they be state-owned, city-owned, or individual company?
I don't think the goal of the, I think the ultimate goal is to produce housing. I don't think the direct goal is to produce housing like in those numbers. I think what they want is, they want the cities and the communities, especially those along bus and rail lines, to create more housing around the bus terminals and the train stations in a higher density there, with the assumption that those people won't buy cars. If you use that idea as the basis for this program, you'd probably come to the conclusion that a lot of the people that are going to take the housing may not live in that community, but they may work in Boston, and they might come and live in Lawrence for an affordable, a more affordable housing unit next to a train station. And that may be true. I don't think there's any question, that's a reality. But again, we'd also... But again, we'd also, one of the, the problems we have in the city is that when we have graduating classes from our high schools, and the students who get educated and, and go out to get jobs, once they are in the workforce, they leave in the city, and that's something that we, we don't want. We'd like to see young families stay in the city, or at least young, young individuals in, in, in fulfill, you know, the, the promise that their, their parents had felt with them when they raised them and put them through school.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Council President. Because the Crosby Street fire was, was mentioned earlier first, I would, I would like to acknowledge our homeless coordinator who is here in the chamber, she's Kelly Frazier, she's been doing an amazing job. Thank you so much for everything that you have done for those families thus far. From speaking with, with those families, and, and learning a little bit more about, about how much they, they pay for their housing, what I'm understanding is that we, we might have a housing shortage, not because there, there aren't developments, I mean, that's, that's a factor of it, but also because of the cost. We, we have developed beautiful housing, we have redeveloped our mills, but at the end of the day, our people cannot afford it. Another thing that I've, I, I heard you say multiple times is that we want to provide housing for our youth, for the youth specifically that are graduating from Lawrence High, from Good Lawrence Tech, from, within our community. And just this Saturday, I was at an event at El Tagen, that, that was all youth, and also myself, I'm 28 years old, so I have these conversations with other individuals around the same age, and they say the same thing, they cannot afford to live in the city of Lawrence. So, I mean, we're, we're discussing about providing housing for our youth, but one, another thing that they mentioned is that they're not being part of these conversations. We are not going to where our youth hang out, or, or where, or where they, they host events about housing and issues and concerns that they have, and yet here we are stating that we wanna provide opportunity when we're not even including them from the beginning. So I hope that, you know, we can, if, if we're gonna move forward this project, and if, and if we're going to specifically state that we're going to help our youth in the city of Lawrence, I hope that we have plans to include them in these conversations.
Last comment, Council Del Rosario.
Thank you, Council President. New development, great. New investments, great. And you just mentioned, that development might be for people coming from Boston to move here and take the train. That scares me. And when it comes to quality of life, growing so fast, what kind of quality of life we're gonna have? Right now, when it's busy, 3:30, 3:45, it takes you 45 minutes to go from north to south. Are we building another bridge? Again, that, those are the things that I want you guys to look, and I know as a state you have nothing to do, but in so many years, we're gonna have so many of this housing, how many people are coming in? What are we looking for in the future? Not just housing. How are people are gonna commute? Are we all gonna take the train? I'm not taking the train from the south to the north, or to the north to the south. So you're building housing for people that are not even in Lawrence. You, as you said it, it's from people that come in to move to Lawrence and take the train and going away. So our quality of life, us, residents of Lawrence, is getting worse every day by even the state's zoning board, or whoever is approving all these projects that are not for Lawrence residents. Thank you, another night.
Thank you very much, Councils, it, Council Levy. Council Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we talking about subsidized housing? Are we talking about Section A housing? Or are we talking about affordable housing?
I think we're talking about all housing. I think we're talking about the, the idea of having a permissive ordinance, like, like the Smart Growth Ordinance, is that it contemplates having market rate housing, but it makes certain minimum requirements for affordability, and affordability is not a low income housing, it's affordability is working class, we call workforce housing. People who are in 60 to 80 percent of the median income. That, and, and a lot of times, that is your single mother with one or two children, that has one income for a, a family. It's, and I think the city in the past has done some good projects on that. I think if you look up at the, the Auntie Mills District, with the old Malden Mills fire, we've had about 400 units of housing going up there. All of that is in the affordable realm, none of that's market rate. And it's been, and I know people who live there, who have decent jobs, but they're not millionaires, but it's a, it's a nice place to live, and those are mainly Lawrence residents. I, I think these other projects, the Riverwalk for one, where I'd say majority of the people are from, are not from Lawrence. Those are market rate, they're very expensive. I can't, I would never see myself spending that much money for, you know, a one-bedroom apartment, but some people will, because that is what the market dictates. Again, we have to look at the city as a whole, we have to look at all the people that need to be addressed, not just one category. My concern years ago, and I've been with the city for a while, my concern years ago was, the only type of housing we were doing was affordable, was low-income tax credit housing. That was the only thing the state was giving us money for, and that was the only thing that was doing it. The fact that we have developers who grew up in Lawrence in a developing housing, market rate housing, in the city, I think is a positive development. These developers are, like as you mentioned, are from the community, they're not from the outside, and, and, and I, I think we're getting a wider variety of housing now than we did, as I said, 15 years ago.
My question come, because sometime when we talk about affordable housing, and we talk about low-income tax housing, so those kind of, those kind of project is practically close to what is called market rate. There are sometimes when people get confused when we mention, we say affordable housing. So those kind of project is being established by the government, and by the state, so that you can have like a 20, 40, 60, or whatever the percent, and sometime, sometime, a market rate is low than one of the housing project that we are mentioning. And people feel bad when we, when they come into us, and they say, oh, this is affordable housing. But they don't even know what is behind what is affordable housing. That is what I say. Are we talking about Section A? Are we talking about housing? Or are we talking about affordable housing? But we have to be very clear, and make it the difference between what is affordable housing, what is the market rate, what is the low-income tax housing, and what is the Section A.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, councilors, thank you so much. So at this point, perhaps a motion to withdraw, we've satisfied that? Is there a motion to withdraw?
So move.
Motion made and seconded by Council Del Rosario. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. At this point, we're gonna go through new business. I wanna thank you, everybody. New business. So Document 13222, amend ordinance 2.04.060, exceptions for certain positions by Councilor Levy, that is going to the ordinance committee. Section number 13322, preach the word of God in the Campanione Common Saturdays, May through October, that's going to the ordinance committee. 13422, preach the word of God at O'Connel Common and Campanione Common, various states, is going to the ordinance committee. Document 13522, Minds With Purpose, one-day charity event, O'Connell Park on August 28th, is going to the ordinance committee. 14022, Christian Campaign to Preach the Word, the Lord Word, at the Campanione Common on July 15th and 16th, is going to the ordinance committee. The next document is 14121, Annual Taxi and Livery Applications, Reliable LLC, that's going to the ordinance. 14222, Annual Taxi and Livery Application, Town and Livery Incorporated, ordinance committee. 14322, Annual Taxi and Livery Application, Meditran LLC, is going to the ordinance committee. 145, Appointment of Jorge Jaime as Director of the Department of Public Works, is going to the Personnel Committee. Number 14622, Hoops, Hoops for Christ Basketball Tournament at O'Neill Basketball Court on May 28th, that is going to the ordinance committee. Old Gold and Secondhand Dealer License is going to the ordinance committee. And that is it. So let's, speaking of the ordinance committee, when are they meeting? When is the ordinance committee meeting?
Next Tuesday at 7:00.
Tuesday at 7:00 is the ordinance committee. Budget and Finance?
Council President, there, there's no items for Budget and Finance, but the Personnel Committee will be meeting at 7:00 PM on Wednesday.
It's personnel 7:00 PM on Wednesday. Is there a vi-
I'm sorry, Council President. Okay. All right, Council President. My, my colleagues in the Personnel Committee have overruled the last date that I gave, Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Tuesday, 6:30. Who is the Vice Chair of the Housing Committee?
No, okay, no, we have six.
Who's gonna take responsibility to be the Vice Chair of the Housing Committee? Is there anything? I don't think there's anything.
No items.
No items. Okay, very good. Public Safety Committee? Who's the Vice Chair? What do you got? Anything?
I'm gonna spend some time for Wednesday at 6:00.
Wednesday at 6:00, okay. Wednesday at 6:00, Public Safety Committee. All right? If that changes, just text me and just make sure that Teresa knows. Committee on the whole, is there any, are you looking at that at all? I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Peano, seconded by the Vice President. All in favor, say aye. The ayes have it.